That was uneasy. That was... Here it is. Here it is. It's right here.
Sorry.
7:30. Oh, Ron. You guys ready? Okay, we're going to start the Franklin Regional Board of School Directors' regular meeting for Monday, April 11, 2022, to order, stamp for the salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Reading of the mission statement. We, the Franklin Regional School community strive for excellence, learning, achievement, and citizenship in all we do. We're in executive session from 7 o'clock to 7:20, contractual and legal. Ms. Wolf, roll call.
Mr. Kuzlowski.
Here.
Mr. Mitterator.
Here.
Mr. Weinman.
Here.
Mr. Karimsky.
Here.
Mr. Azalina.
Here.
Ms. Eshelman-Ramey.
Here.
Ms. Alteri-Hand.
Here.
Mr. Yingling.
Here.
Mr. Yant is absent this evening.
Thank you. Okay, superintendent's report. Dr. Prino.
Thank you, Mr. Yingling. It is my pleasure tonight to have one of our teachers, Mrs. Megan Malucci, and some of our students from the Westmoreland Online Academy with us. To give you a little bit of history on the Westmoreland, or the Westmoreland Online Academy, coming out of COVID and the pandemic, we knew that a number of our students wanted a different format for education, and that was very, very clear to us. And we realized that we had a responsibility to take our, at least provide some options and choices for our families in terms of choosing their educational format. Looking at the number of students, we knew that Franklin Regional alone could not provide that. And so, in an effort to be economical, efficient, and provide a high-quality experience, we partnered with Norwin and Hemfield Area to create the Westmoreland Online Academy. And right now, at this point, in terms of its development, the Westmoreland Online Academy is available to students in kindergarten through 5th grade. And we're looking next year at expansion into the secondary. And the details and logistics around that are, continue to be worked on, but we're really excited for the future of that program, but we're even more excited about the success that the elementary program has had. So we'll turn it over to Mrs. Malucci, who will talk to you about her work, as well as have her students.
Thank you, Dr. Prino. It is really a pleasure to be here tonight to kind of showcase my kids and all the wonderful things that they do at the Westmoreland Online Academy. My name is Megan Malucci. As Dr. Prino said, I've been teaching for Franklin Regional for over three decades. I'm also an FR alum, so for me, it's FR, near and dear to my heart always. I wanted to talk a little bit about online education being a powerful choice for our students. As Dr. Prino said, choice was important in our situation that we were going through. And I want to tie it into Fred Rogers a little bit, because everything in life, I can always kind of tie back to Fred Rogers in some way. And if you think about how Fred Rogers connected with millions of people all over the world through a medium of technology, through a screen, we certainly have the power to have online education as a powerful force, and not as something that isn't, you know, done without fidelity. It's essential that the teachers are trained, that they know how to train their kids to be digital citizens, and how to get the job done. And the medium of technology is a powerful thing, and for us, we're using it for the good. These kids are digital citizens and digital ambassadors, and they're going to show you that in just a little bit. So just as Fred Rogers connected with his audience, and though we never had interaction with him, truly, we did feel a connection. And that's what the WOAA community does. We connect to our kids. We make sure that they have a voice, that they have a choice. We let those kids know that we care about them. We let them know that their voice makes a difference, and we give them encouragement that maybe they didn't feel before, or we give them the tools to be successful. And so, for me, it's a great honor to do this. I was a Discovery Digital Ambassador for Franklin Regional. For three years, I had the privilege of being trained by the best in the business. Discovery Ed came in, and they coached us. They came into our classrooms, and they said, "What's the lesson we're going to be working on? And let's plan that lesson in a digital format." Pre-pandemic. And when Dr. Baphone said to me, my principal, "I want you to apply for that," and I said, "Oh, no, I'm good." He's like, "No, I really, please, Meg, please try to, you know, I'd like you to apply." I'm like, "We'll see." I applied. I became a digital ambassador. It was the most monumental decision I ever made in my life, because it changed the way I taught. Not that good teaching is a good teaching. You're a good teacher, you could still be a good teacher, but it gave me tools that I never knew existed, and it elevated my game, and it made me proud that I could do this and learn, and continuously learn. That's what good teaching is as well. And so, with those tools, when this position became available, I felt that it was my responsibility. I needed to pay it forward. I needed to say, "You know what? The district invested three years in me. I need to do this for my district." And so, I did. And so, I spoke to Dr. Prino, and he said to me, "I just have one request." And I said, "Well, what is that?" And he said, "Make sure they get the good stuff." And I said, "I assure you that they will." And they do. And that doesn't come from just me. I have tremendous support from Dr. Prino, from Dr. Pines, from my building principal, Rob Baphone, from Nick Fulone, who's the principal of the Westmoreland Online Academy for our students. But also, I have incredible support from Jen DeFovio, who's our liaison between all the districts, Tina Gillen, who publishes, publicizes so many things for me that we're doing that are important. And I feel that, you know, Brad has been, Brad Schergos has been an incredible support to me, because technologically, there are times that I do need him, and he comes right in for, right, as soon as I need him, he's there for me. There's tons of support in this district. My 4th grade colleagues and I meet every week in PLCs, professional learning communities. We work together to make sure all of our kids get the good stuff, all of them. My colleagues are tremendous in embracing my kids and saying, "How can we include them? We want to make sure they get the good stuff, too." And just some examples of some of the amazing things that they've been able to have the opportunity to participate in are things like the National Honor Society students that come to my classroom virtually once a week and give of their time, and they volunteer to be collaborators with my students, to elevate what we're doing in the classroom. That partnership is very strong, and it is very important to my kids to have older ambassadors that help us. I had a senior intern this year, Abigail Hopkins, came to my classroom every day for nine weeks and supported and assisted my kids in so many different ways. They got the good stuff. In addition to that, I have Co-Joy that I do with my students once a month with the Co-Joy team. Carmen Logner, she was really instrumental in facilitating that partnership for me, and she started us, and then she was able to release, and we continue. And we're working on grants to support Co-Joy, so my students can have coding in the classroom. They have coding. And why not? These are our digital citizens. They should have coding. They should know how to code, and so they know how to code. We have virtual field trips that we participate in. They've been invited to the book fairs, to Picture Day, to our March Math Madness, and I'm very happy about this, they will have a digital team for my beloved Science Olympiad, which I've been doing the Science Olympiad for our district for close to two decades now. We're having a virtual team, and they will compete against our 4th graders. They're getting the good stuff. I will never let Dr. Prino down. If that's what he wants, that's what we're doing. So I'm very grateful for all the support that I've received. Our students have a very rigorous program. We use the learning management system, the LMS, called Pearson. It is based on state standards, and it is extraordinary. It is one of the most rigorous programs I have ever seen in my 32 years of teaching. And so, again, they're getting the good stuff. It is live instruction. It is not asynchronous. We are synchronous every day. We log on at 8:45, and I'm there for office hours until 3:30 every single day. And the kids have to participate, and we kind of use the Malucci Rule of Thumb. You don't have to have your digital hand up to be called upon. You can be called upon at any point in time, so you always must be on task and paying attention, because that's what good learning and good teaching is all about. And so, that academic rigor exists. We have incorporated the five Cs throughout the year. It was what we started with at the beginning of our PD, our professional development at the beginning of the school year, and we continue it with the WOAA platform. Collaboration every day. My kids can go into breakout rooms. We have clubs. We have the furry friends club. We have the art club. We have board game club, where they actually have a camera they put above the board game. Wesley's the captain, and they can play board games virtually together, because we need to connect. Though we're apart, we need to connect. There are no walls between us. We are collaborative. We are a group of strong individuals who really love what we're doing, and it shows. The citizenship is there every day. They are incredible digital citizens. In addition, the creativity that flows every day. We use Kami and Canvas and Google Tools for art. We listen to classical music every day before the day begins. We make sure that that is in place for those kids. Critical thinking drives what we do. That higher-level thinking is paramount in everything that we do. So for me, it has been an incredible experience, and I am so proud to be the Westmoreland Online Academy 4th grade teacher. And my students, they always get a voice and a choice. So we have four students, three of them here in person, one that did a little video, that wanted to say a few words about Westmoreland Online Academy and what it means to them. And just as Fred Rogers made those connections with kids, please understand, online education can be an incredible tool. And I will say that, you know, a lot of times, people say, "Well, online education," you know. I'm telling you, it's phenomenal. And I have a group of incredible kids who are here because they want to be, and giving them that voice and giving them that choice has made all the difference. So I'm excited that you'll have an opportunity to hear my superstars back here, get to shine like the stars that they are every day. Tonight, you'll get to see firsthand what I get to experience every day, and I hope that you will be impressed with them as I am each day. So, first up, Wesley Harper, are you ready? All right.
My name is Wesley Harper. My district is the Hemfield Area School District. What I like about WOAA4 is that I can move around while the teacher is teaching. I am very energetic and learn best while moving. Another thing I like about WOAA4 is that we are almost always live, except for the rare occasion, the rare occasions when we have to go asynchronous. One of my successes in WOAA4 is my writing. We have breakout rooms where we can conference with the teacher. Thank you for letting me be here, Wesley Harper.
Want to be at the podium, or do you want to be here? This is Eric Jane. He's Franklin Regional.
In WOAA4, my speaking is better than before. Ms. Malucci, step by step, helps us understand more easily. I like math in clubs, which are very fun.
Thank you. And this is Melena Kreis.
Hi, my name is Melena Kreis. I go to Norwin, and I really love WOAA because it has made me more confident to raise my hand or to share my writings, or if I have any questions, I ask the teacher now, when I used to not really ask or help as much when I was in school.
Thank you, Melena.
Thank you.
So I wanted a representative from each of the districts, so you could just hear a little bit from each one of them. And then, my fourth representative is a Jeanette School District student, and she could not be here tonight, but she did send a little video clip.
I'm Eva Baradere from the Jeanette School District. Well, change my life. Ms. Malucci has taught us how to become outstanding writers. Writers Workshop and Ms. Malucci have made me 100% more confident in my writings. Thank you, Mr. Fulone and Ms. Malucci. Wowee Kazawee.
So do you have any questions that I could answer for you?
I want to, first of all, say thank you for having the courage to step up to the plate, when I think a lot of us in life, we have a sort of a hesitancy, because we're not too sure, but obviously, from the passion, the way you spoke, the way the kids were speaking. And I hear this common theme reoccurring within the Franklin Regional School District. It's the collaborative team learning. And for the students, you have to learn to stick together, work together, because that's what life is all about. Thank you for your leadership and what you did.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you, Harper.
I just wanted to commend you, and it's amazing how well-prepared Franklin Regional was to, because of your leadership. So I thank you so much for your constant leadership, as long as I've known you. And I also wanted to talk about the connections, you know, part of the five Cs. It's, you have connections between three different school districts, four, if you include Jeanette. And I think that that experience is tremendous, to get out of the little bubble and experience peers from other districts.
It really is. It's amazing, and we don't identify each other by the district that we're from. We're just WOAA. But yeah, I think it's amazing to like cross those district lines and just be a group. It's really a wonderful thing.
Thank you again. Thanks all the kids that shared up tonight, too. Thank you.
And I'm going to tell you that you are providing them the good stuff. And when we talk about good stuff, it's not only the curriculum and instruction, it is about the relationships that students build. It's that connection to their teacher. It's that connection to their school. And when Mrs. Malucci came to me and said, "What about the WOAA students with the Science Olympiad?" Absolutely. And she is making sure that they're building those connections, not only with other students, even in our school, but also back in their home school districts. And it's pretty exciting, and we're really proud of. And this is the first time, to my knowledge, that we've had students from other schools speak in our school board meeting. So I can't wait to tell you, can't wait to tell your superintendents.
Thank you so much.
Thank you again. You can leave if you want. You can stay for the meeting. It's up to you. Dr. P., anything else?
That concludes the superintendent's report for this evening.
Thank you very much. Okay, I need approval, or motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for March 21st, 2022, committee of the whole meeting for April 4th, 2022.
So moved.
Moved, Ed.
Second, Scott.
Second, Scott. Comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries eight zero. Future dates and upcoming topics. Dr. Prino.
Excuse me for a second. Okay, April 22nd, we will be having a finance committee meeting beginning at 1:30 PM in administrative offices, which are now located in the former Newlandsburg Elementary School. On April 27th, we will have a technology committee meeting beginning at 5:00 PM, again at the administrative offices. On May 2nd, we will have a committee of the whole and a special voting meeting beginning at 7:30 PM at the Murraysville Municipal Building. And I just want to announce that tentatively, we're planning on changing the regular board meeting for that evening as well. So we will have the committee of the whole meeting that night, as well as the regular meeting. So we will have, on May 2nd, we will have both of those meetings on the same evening, as well as the special budget voting meeting. Then on May 18th, we will have a curriculum committee meeting beginning at 5:00 PM in the administrative offices. Upcoming topics include election of treasurer, proposed school board meeting dates for 2022, 2023, policy second read, personnel, annual ESY or extended school year contracts, gifts, grants, and donations, budget transfers, and the auto report. And that concludes future dates and upcoming topics.
Thank you, Dr. Prino. Okay, I need a motion for the treasurer's report for March 2022.
Second, Scott.
Move, Scott. Second, Mark. Comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries eight zero. Okay. List of bills for April 2022. Paid bills, general fund, $3,173,132.44. Athletic fund, $14,504.08. Total paid bill is $3,187,636.52. Unpaid bills, general fund, $1,596,790.66. Athletic fund, $8,301.12. Construction fund, $3,472. For a total of unpaid bills of $1,608,563.78. For grand total of $4,796,230.30. Food service, $124,821.98. For a grand total, including food service, of $4,921,82.28. Need a motion for payment of bills.
So moved.
So moved, Kevin.
Second.
Second, Diana. Comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries eight zero. Okay, we're to the public comments. First one, Helen Elliott. Could you repeat your name and address, please?
Certainly. Helen Elliott. I live at 3166 Chestnut Street in Murraysville, Pennsylvania. And again, I want to thank you folks for serving, for being volunteers, and of your time, your efforts, and everything else. I have no idea how much you, time you have to commit to this, but I'm sure it's a lot. I have two things I wanted to bring tonight. First one is, at the last school board meeting, a gentleman named Chuck spoke about a walkout at the middle school, and I'm just wondering if we're going to hear what that was about, learn the facts of that. I mean, I've heard some scuttlebutt, but I don't consider that facts, so I'm wondering how we're going to go about and get the facts to the citizens. Secondly, about the heritage teardown of $1.1 million, how that jumped up. Now, I only heard, I only saw one letter to the editor. A lady wrote in saying, you know, "Has anybody else noticed that this has happened?" And I did. I mean, I read it in the paper, in the Penn Franklin. And I got to thinking asbestos, for Pete's sakes, who? I'm not a contractor. I mean, I can maybe hammer a nail, and I can put a screw in the wall, you know, or something, but I'm not a contractor. But I know the age of my house, and how old it is, and I understand that school's older than that, so someone should have known there was asbestos there. I don't get it. I don't get it. I don't understand why that wasn't detected as the contracts came in. Secondly, I learned that there used to be a shooting range in the basement, so when it was originally the high school. And does that mean that there's lead in the walls? Has that been taken into account? Are we going to get hit with another $300,000, $400,000, $500,000? Just wondering. Just wondering. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Fran.
Good evening. I'm Fran Jolimey. My last name's always a tricky one to pronounce. I got to come last time at the meeting, and I really appreciated it.
Your address, Fran.
4223 Hills Church Road, Murraysville. And the reason I'm here tonight, you know, I thank you. I do take off work to come to these meetings, and I just want to stress that I'm not getting paid, I'm losing pay to come, and it's the importance to me as a citizen, as a parent of kids who went here, that I do that. And I really want to thank you for your dedication and your seriousness to our kids. And the teacher, Mrs. Malucci, as she spoke, I thought about, she said how Franklin Regional was dear and near to her heart, and I think that is a lot of how I feel. I've been in this district for 32 years. My husband and I moved here because, one of the reasons we moved was because of Franklin Regional School District. We wanted to have children in this school district and have them educated here. And thankfully, we were able to do that, and I just wanted to give a little history about that. And my kids, thank God, it was a good experience for them overall, and they graduated. I'm just concerned where I see some decisions being made by the district. And I'm here tonight again. I was here last week, and reference was made to the gentleman about the walkout at the middle school. And I understand, and I could be wrong, because again, I've not seen this in writing, that it was a teacher and counselor led the walkout. I don't know if that's true. I would like some transparency about that. I think that's a right we all have as taxpayers and citizens, to know a little bit more about that, and to know exactly what happened, to be honest. So I want to hope that gets addressed tonight, or at some point, that you do focus on that, because I know me and a lot of other people want to know the details about that. Second of all, I wanted to say that my kids were athletes at Franklin Regional. As a matter of fact, my daughter broke a record in the discus. I'm very proud of her. Her name's spelled incorrectly, but it is up on the wall in the gym, and I'm very proud of that. And she had a great experience with athletics here at Franklin Regional, for the most part, as well as my son. And I was just concerned to learn about the, again, at the meeting last time, last week, about the designation on the, I believe it's a track and field form, whether, I'd like some transparency about that, what's happening with our policies, whether it's male, female, and another option is given. I would like to know who makes those policies and how I can participate in the, if, if and how I can participate in the policies around that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Amy.
Hi, Amy Sheridan, 2785 Walker Court. I came tonight to express my appreciation for the unpausing of the Book Persepolis, and also to express my hope that going forward, top-tier professionally-designed, approved curriculum will continue to be the standard here, which I expect. I think a lot of parents are like me, and most of us would really rather not address the school board, but I'm here anyway. We'd like to see the success of all the Franklin Regional School District students, and we trust the skill of the professional educators in the district. So I'm here tonight to basically say that. We trust you to do the work of educating our students, to go out into a world that's extraordinarily challenging and dynamic, and to do that educating in a way that is consistent with existing policies and procedures. When I say "our" students, I want to be clear that I mean all of our students in our community. I think most parents I know feel the same. We want to see all of our students, not just the ones in my house, succeed. Every student is a unique individual. Their families have roots in many areas. Their family traditions are not necessarily the same, and in many cases, they face difficulties we can't even imagine. But I trust the professional educators here at Franklin Regional to continue to help these students learn from the many voices around them and to engage with challenging material. We trust you to help each student feel valued and have the critical thinking skills to make their way in today's complicated world.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Amy. Yes.
I'm sorry, I override intending to speak, and the meeting has started a few minutes early. Is it possible to request to speak?
Yes, come on up. Just need your name and address. Katie. I know her. It's Katie Troutman.
Thank you very much. Great, I'll sign that after I'm finished to not take people's time. My name's Kristi Troutman. I live at 4043 Sloanwood Drive here in Murray'sville, and I've spoken several times. I think many of us are paying a little more attention these days since the conversations about Persepolis. And I just really appreciate the job that you're all doing of listening and responding and leading our school district. Over the last couple of school board meetings and curriculum committee meetings, I was a bit concerned that there seems to be a few committee member, not committee members, community members who have expressed objection about our curriculum, including perspectives from authors of color or representing experiences of people of color. And even more troubled by the fact that conversations about making all of our students from potentially different backgrounds and experiences feel welcome in our school as a form of political indoctrination. That worries me. And so I went to the public notice, great transparency on the website, and I was able to find the school district mission, vision, and shared values. And I just, for the record, wanted to read the last three values that are on that list. This is not a new list. I think it was dated 2015. I'm sure that was just a revision. Number eight, everyone is expected to appreciate the importance, contribution, and impact of diversity in our global society. Nine, everyone is entitled to and shares responsibility for maintaining a safe, supportive environment, and everyone is expected to learn to engage in dialogue and discuss differences with civility. So those are values that I am proud of and that I share, and I wanted to say thank you. And a quick PS on an entirely different topic. I just wanted to say that I was so pleased to see that the social media policy is being amended to include standards around making posts be accessible to students, families, and community members who have disabilities. That that made me very pleased and proud. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that's it for public comments? All right, solicitors' comments.
No comment at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Okay, items removed from the consent agenda for separate action by members of the board. Okay, consent agenda item, consent agenda item number one is camp intervention. Number two, 2022, 23 district supply bids, gifts and grants and donations. Number three, four budget transfers, PSBA liaisons. Number five, personnel. Number six, policy. Number seven, affiliation agreement with the Westminster College. Number eight, fellowship agreement with St. Vincent College. For number nine, need a motion for agenda items one through nine.
So moved.
Moved, Ed.
Second.
Second, Tracy. Comments? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries eight zero. Okay, new business, Teamsters Local 205 Agreement. Ms. Wills. Anybody have any questions on the agreement? We don't have any questions on the agreement on that one. The COVID, Ms. Wills, 2022, 23 COVID-19 MOU. Anybody have any questions? 2021, 22 hybrid online learning MOU for the Franklin Regional Education Association. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, I need a motion to approve new businesses one through three.
So moved.
It's a contract. I think it needs to-
It needs to vote.
Okay, all three individual? Okay, I need a motion for Teamsters Local Contract 205 Agreement. Moved, Tracy. Second.
Second.
Second, Mark. Comments? Hearing none? Roll call.
Mr. Kozloski?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterator?
Yes.
Mr. Weinman?
Yes.
Mr. Kromsky?
Yes.
Mr. Azalina?
Yes.
Ms. Echelman-Ramey?
Yes.
Ms. Altiri Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Yingling?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Okay, I need a motion for numbers two and three for motion for approval.
So moved.
Moved, Ed.
Second.
Second, Diana. Comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries eight zero. Okay, I need a motion for adjournment. It was not here. Somebody want to make a motion?
So moved.
Moved, Ed. Second.
Second.
Kevin? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, motion carries eight zero. Everybody have a great Easter.